Good evening, welcome to the December 8th School Board Meeting. I'm Rick Mason, President of the School Board, and this is our last meeting of the year. So, our mission statement is, "By providing an outstanding education, the Lake Mills Area School District inspires our students to be responsible citizens with integrity and lifelong learners in an ever-changing world." Could we rise and do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I call the meeting to order? Do we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney.
Here.
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 Steve Topol.
Richard Mason.
Here.
Eli Primer.
Here.
Verification of meeting notice?
It was in the paper and on the website.
Any agenda revisions?
I think the only one would be that Dr. Thomas is going to take Mr. Topol's place at the Finance Committee report because she was there and he was not.
Okay. We have approval, please?
I will have approval of the agenda as modified.
One and second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That passes unanimously. Committee, any input?
I know Melissa wanted to go against Mr. Klotz, so I think Melissa said it first, so you want to...
You want to go first, you guys.
I don't want you guys to fight over it here. Mr. Klotz.
Hello. Written to be shared there.
All right, happy December, everybody. So, at the last board meeting, an issue came up that we had some questions about. So, with reference to Board Policy 536.2, which says that employees will be offered the opportunity to conduct an exit interview, we're wondering what's been the rate of response for the exit interviews and what data's been collected so far, and when and how will that data be shared? Furthermore, we're also eagerly anticipating the forthcoming updates on other post-employment benefits, and the members of the OPEB Committee are looking forward to continuing this conversation with administration as decisions are developed for the board's approval. And not only are we looking forward to that OPEB resolution, but are also eager to begin the formation of the Salary Committee to continue to create a new compensation schedule. So, we know that everyone's busy, but as members affected by these decisions, we believe our participation is essential in the implementation of these committees. So, we appreciate your consideration for those points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. State your full name again and the address for the record.
Melissa Fearman, 230 Stonefield Drive, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. First, I want to do a PTO update for you again. The Frozen Dance was this last Friday. It was a great success, our biggest attendance ever. We had over 230 kids in our train dance we did, and we've gone through more drinks and snacks than ever before. We'd like to thank our teachers and principal that attended, Mrs. Thompson, Mrs. Curst, Mrs. Pierceick, Mrs. Russo, Mrs. Davis, and Mrs. Iverson. Also, thank you to Mr. Kiefer, he was there as well, and he had a wonderful display by the front door with our students' artwork. Also, to the volunteers that came early to set up and helped during the dance and stayed late to clean up. Stayed late to clean up, without you, nothing would be possible. To the janitors, Stu and Kate, who were so helpful, friendly and kind, helping during the dance clean up, your hard work is appreciated. And then, what I just handed you guys, this past August, Mrs. Thompson approached me to see if I was interested in nominating Mrs. Dahl for the American Library Association's Librarian of the Year Award. Of course, I was interested in nominating Mrs. Dahl, she's a wonderful member in our school community, and what I gave you is a copy of my nomination of Mrs. Dahl for Librarian of the Year, and I hope you'll take time to read it and learn about what a great librarian we have. I gave Mrs. Dahl a copy this morning, and she should be getting a mailed copy from the American Library Association. Ten librarians are chosen to win, she was not one of them, but there were over 1,000 entries. Then lastly, once again, I'm here to ask about exit interviews. I see they're on the agenda under closed session, I don't understand why they aren't under open session. Are we trying to hide something? At the last school board meeting, we were told by Dr. Mason and teachers that are still in the district that we are losing teachers to Act 10. I believe the only way to know why teachers are leaving is to have exit interviews and to ask the teachers that have left why they left. If exit interviews end up saying it is indeed Act 10, then we need to find a way to retain teachers. If the exit interviews say they're leaving because of something else, then we need to figure that out. But until we have exit interviews and the results, everything else is speculation. I would hope the results of the exit interviews would be shared with the public. Also, I'm sorry, I can't stay for the rest of the meeting, but I will be watching it on the cable, the public cable channel. Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes of November 10th regular meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the November 10, 2014, regular meeting.
Move to approve the minutes of the 10th regular board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 I abstain.
Opposed, and one abstention. Three ayes and one abstention, and that passes. Vouchers and invoices and treasurer's report.
I'll move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $719,923.80 for the month of November and a treasurer's report for November 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the vouchers and invoices and the treasurer's report. Do we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Dr. Imperial. Aye.
Donna Thomas. Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Administrative reports, Ms. Nicholson.
Good evening. Just a couple of things that have been going on in the last month at the middle school. Tonight, we had our second of four of our parent series meetings for eighth grade parents. Our first one was on internet concerns, and then tonight was actually on cutting students who do self-harm. Last time, we had about a dozen parents attend, this time, we had about six or seven. But we do put the information out on emails for the parents the following day so that they can track that. We have been doing bi-weekly meetings on the Smarter Balanced Assessment, which is now called the Badger Exam officially. The state has found a vendor to distribute the test that will be given in the spring to all third through eighth graders. Our average testing time, although it's not timed anymore like the WKCE, is between three and four hours for English and three and four hours for math. There's two portions of the test. One is a computer-based test like the map test, and the other is a performance task where the teacher gets up and does some teaching, and then the students go and perform the tasks. So, it'll be interesting, the questions are very challenging. Mr. Hagstrom couldn't even figure one out the other day, how to make a smaller cereal box or something, I don't know, but it was interesting. And I want to thank all of the people involved in the concert last Thursday night. In the very last piece, I saw Brad standing up there, and I just thought, I mean, I was just overwhelmed, not that all of them don't work hard, but this man works really hard. And to be up there for four different bands, and it's not just because he's here, but that was my overwhelming feeling, is that they just put a ton of effort with many, many, many of our children and many of our parents. We packed it twice, one for fifth and sixth grade concert, and then again for the seventh and eighth grade concert. So, it was wonderful, but I just really wanted to honor all the effort that they put in there. Any questions for me? Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Strike.
Good evening. In response to the data presentation that Ms. Seabrood gave about some discrepancies between scores, especially with students from Hispanic backgrounds, and because of some of the other issues at the high school, we created a Hispanic Advisory Board. It's a group of students that voluntarily come together with me. We're going to be having our third meeting tomorrow, and I just want to tell you that the purpose of this advisory board is to provide insights on the experience of students of Hispanic background and to make recommendations for improvements in LMHS. As we're talking, I think that some of their recommendations and their insights are going to be for the whole district, and they're talking about their whole experience all the way from when they began school. So, I think it's going to be some powerful information, and I'll share that with you in written form as we progress. I'm actually looking for an outside consultant to help me with that because I think that it's pretty powerful, pretty emotional kind of conversations, and I think I could use some support in taking on some of those issues. We've been having about 16 kids a time come in. Following Dr. Delaney's lead today, instead of bringing you the course handbook, I emailed that to each of you tonight. If you'd like a hard copy, I can certainly get it for you yet tonight. It's 40 pages, so obviously lots and lots of trees. Just a few of the changes that I wanted to talk you through as you look at it. You're going to see some course name changes, and they're going to be in math because we added some math classes last year, and the names were a bit confusing. So, you're going to see some course name changes in math. We also offer automotive classes at Jefferson High School, and that was not included in the book, and you'll see they're included now. And the biggest change is going to be in the business department. And so, we've been working this year with Cindy Sandberg to create a track, not only of the business, traditional business kind of classes, but a track also more geared toward technology. You know, we've been offering keyboarding, we've been offering Microsoft Office, advanced computer applications, there's even more. And the reason for that is that we need more electives and options for students, but we also need to align with our neighboring schools. And we also know that, obviously, technology is a really critical area for students, and so we want to offer some more electives in that area. So, I'd like for you to take a look at those. And our hope is that you'll take a look at this, and then we can do a final approval next month, so we can begin course selection already in February for next year. And then finally, at each of your places, I put a fall sports schedule. It's going to be an exciting season with the two basketball teams, or boys, girls, and wrestling, and dance is sprinkled in there, and of course, all of the show choir and different kinds of music groups perform the National Anthem and the pep band, so lots of fun. So, I wanted to give you that, so you could come to some of those if you'd like. Any questions?
Are you going to hand that out to us, or what?
The what?
The handbook.
I emailed it. Do you want a hard copy?
No, I don't.
All right.
Maybe somebody else does. Okay.
Just let me know, I can get that to you if you prefer that.
Sometime in the future, too, when we do these changes, maybe we can run and get the pages where there are changes.
Well, that'll be all right.
Oh, that'd be great.
That's all we really need. Everything else stays the same, so...
Or highlighted or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Actually, why don't you let me do that for you, and then I'll resend it tomorrow with the highlights. Okay?
All I need are the pages that got highlights on them. Otherwise, I know everything's the same, I got an old one.
Okay. All right, great. Great, I'll take care of that.
Do we not have a freshman basketball girls team? Is that why they're all crossed out?
Right.
Do not have enough girls out for freshman basketball.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Mrs. Seabrood.
Good evening. I feel like I've really gotten in the swing of things with curriculum work this month, and we've had an English Language Arts Curriculum meeting. They've started last year, so they're in their second year. What we're really focusing this year is on the scope and sequence, and then we'll be focusing on the materials that they need. So, the scope and sequence this year is going to be a little bit different because it's going to focus on probably six units per course, and what the goals of the units in enduring understandings and essential questions are, so we can publish those in some format to the parents so that everybody understands what kids will be learning if they take these courses, focusing more on the understanding by design method for that. We started science last week, and we started off by learning a little bit about what understanding by design is. This next week, we'll have art Thursday, and then next week, we'll have world languages and music. So, those are the five course topics that I'm working on. And we've also started two special education committees to focus on autism, best practices and evidence-based practices, so that we're really servicing our students with autism the best we can, and best practices in co-teaching, so that our teachers are really providing those services in least restrictive environments. Any questions?
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening. In the month of December, Lake Mills Elementary is focusing on cooperation. So, we have a couple of events that focus on that. The first is our winter clothing drive, which just concluded last Friday. Parents and community members brought in snow pants and boots and gloves and hats and mittens for us to pass out to students who may be in need of those items. So, I want to thank the community for all of their support. Our spirit squad is also running a toy drive this month, so you can bring in any gently-used or new toys to our school, and those will all be donated to Christmas neighbors. In addition, we had our PTO winter dance, and I do want to thank our PTO board members and volunteers who helped to put on that event. Without the volunteers, these events wouldn't be possible. So, parents, if you are available, please contact the PTO to volunteer for future events so we can make sure that we continue to offer these really wonderful and fun events for our children. Tomorrow is our winter concert. We will be expecting many, many visitors to our school, and we've done some special things with parking to make sure that people who are coming to the concert can find a spot to park either at the school or at the Plinar building. We'll be running bus shuttles to and from our school in the Plinar parking lot so that community members, parents and grandparents who are coming to the concert will be able to park and have a ride to the front doors. And then finally, the authors of ABC Naturally, Lynn Dible and Jan Kolscher, came to our school just before Thanksgiving to work with all of our students. They are the authors and photographers of ABC Naturally, and worked with our students to look closely at their world and use poetic devices in their everyday writing. So, that was an exciting opportunity for all of our children. Any questions? Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mr. Chady.
Good evening. Last week, we closed on the debt borrowings that the board authorized last month, those being the $1 million debt borrowing for improvements at the high school, and then the refunding of the 2008 issuance for the middle school. So, both of those closings progressed as planned, and glad to have that experience behind me. Also, you know, it was a first time for everything, and that was a first time, so a little bit more entailed than I thought, but good experience nonetheless. Also, I've provided each of the board members, with the exception of Dr. Thomas, with some information from Moore Strategy Group. They came and did a presentation to the Finance Committee, and Mrs. Thomas was at that, so she has that information. But this is kind of, this was the third, I believe, opportunity that they've been to the district, meeting with Dean and myself with regards to how perhaps we need to engage a higher level of service with regards to our employee benefits. You know, our current benefits consultant, Houseman Johnson, is very good with the day-to-day interactions and customer service. In fact, they'll be here tomorrow afternoon to meet one-on-one with employees that have signed up for that opportunity. Houseman Johnson's very good with the annual renewal process and helping us to make changes to keep our costs down on an annual basis. But where we're not getting the services, so to speak, is kind of the long-term vision of the changes that perhaps we ought to make with our employee benefits to maintain the level of benefits, but yet be able to deliver that at a lesser cost to the district. So, Moore Strategy Group is very promising in the opportunities that they can help deliver. So, some information for you on that, and we'll be looking for some approval from the board to engage their services next month. We also met with the Lake Mills Area Community Foundation with regards to transitioning the scholarships that are currently under management by the district to the Community Foundation, and reviewing the roles and responsibilities, and a memorandum of understanding with the Community Foundation as well. In fact, that, too, will be coming before the board, hopefully next month as well for your blessings. We do have a number of scholarship CDs that are due to renew in their term early in 2015, and our desire is to have the board authorize us to transition those to the Community Foundation so that as those CDs mature, then we can close them out of our books and send those funds over to the Community Foundation for investments there. And also, some work was done this past month on our 403B plans and updates, including bringing the Roth IRA in. Well, we had hoped to have that available to our employees prior to the beginning of the school year, that did not come to be, but we are looking at making that effective January 1st with a retroactive date. Hopefully, the board can adopt that at your regular meeting in January. So, those were the activities from the business office, the big ones, at least this past month.
Excuse me, Mr. Chady, the MOR Strategy Group, since it sounds as though you are going to be coming to us with a recommendation that they be engaged, would the entire board benefit from a presentation from these people?
We can certainly have it on the agenda for them to come before the board next month if that's a desire.
I certainly agree that we need to be looking at benefits from a more strategic and perhaps a higher plane than we have in the past, but it would be good to become a little more familiar with these folks, and they might be able to share with us other districts that they have worked with as well.
Yes. Yep.
Which would improve our comfort level.
Yeah.
I'm going to report on that, too, who they are.
Yeah. But I'll add that to the agenda to invite them to our January board meeting, and that way we have a presentation. Certainly.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Mr. Sanders.
Couple of things first. In your packet, you were, I think, given a letter and survey from WASB that they're doing something this year by a survey. You will kind of get your feedback, feedback of board members across the state, and then each one of your sheets has a different access number, so if you feel that you want to do that, please go ahead. If you don't, I've got all the access numbers, so I can just individually give them out. Secondly, we had our third strategic planning meeting for the first session last week, and we have one more coming up on December 17th. We are looking at mission and vision statements, and now kind of looking at belief statements that go with that. And then our second phase will start in January, and then, you know, wrapped up into you in April or so. Donna, did you want to be part of that second phase that you weren't able to be there for the first?
You know, I wondered about that. I never even got an invitation to be on anything.
Well, I sent you an email, but I know you were out west when I sent it.
Yeah, well, I never, I can't remember ever getting anything.
Okay, so would being on the second part be all right for you?
Sure, that's kind of what I wanted.
And the last thing is just a, and it's, there's no decisions that have to be made tonight on, we're in a process where we have to start looking at our calendar for next year. And for the first time in my history in this business, which is all the way back to the dinosaur age, the, we don't have 180-day rule anymore. It's now all hours and minutes. And it's the first time ever that I've dealt with a calendar where you didn't do 180 days. You counted out 180 days, you put it in the books, and you moved on. Under our current system, we have 405 minutes a day at the elementary, 407 at the middle, and 403 at the high school. So, I use the average of 400 minutes. And if you start to work that out towards the, and I think I put this all in your packet, the DPI regulations towards hours and minutes, in grade seven through 12, you have to have the most hours of instruction, which is 1,137. If you take the minutes that we have every day, that means you have to have 171 days of instruction. In the past, it was 178 because you did 180 and two days of parent-teacher conferences. You'd still have to do two days of parent-teacher conferences at 171, but that's a philosophical change, and it's a philosophical change that I'm not going to make on my own. I met with the leadership group of the teachers, I know that Ms. Russo may still be here, I'm not sure, but was helping me out by sending out a survey to the teachers to talk about in-service days and, you know, vacation things, to try to include them. But they, you know, if we were to go public and say, "This year, we have 178 days." Now, three of those could be snow days, and you don't make those up, but at 171, that's seven less days. So, there's a positive to that, because the positive would be, we'd be out on June 3rd, which meant summer school starts earlier, and you give the kids a vacation before they have to start coming back the year after. The negative is, how is that going to be viewed by the public in that it's less days and less hours and less minutes, and are we all working less time? And then there are groups of people that work for us that wouldn't work as many days, so it's not a decision that I want to make by myself. So, I guess why I put that all in this, the packet to you, is to be able to discuss it, give you time to go back and think about it. I don't think we have to put the calendar out until February, that's pretty much where we've done it in the past, but I really would like some feedback of what you get, especially after tonight of making this public, any feedback you get or feedback that you have, and bring it back in January to relook at it again, and then bring something in February to finalize. But I'm putting it out there, and I'll take any questions. I don't have anything finalized. I have nothing on paper. I'm just showing you that by the new rule, that's what it has to be, because the game has changed. The only thing that hasn't changed is September 1.
You know, I've had an opportunity to think about this after I saw the agenda packet come out, and understanding that there's, you know, there's a lot of discussion about year-round school and more instruction and meeting goals and accountability in schools, I guess I'd like to hear arguments about why we should be having less instruction. That just seems counterintuitive to me. To me, that is going to be a very important consideration in how we do this. And I understand the standard has changed, and I would be concerned about, you know, I know in some cases, people have manipulated minutes, adding five minutes to the day, and you go, "Really?"
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's, I'm kind of skeptical. I'm not sure about the history of this, and maybe it doesn't matter, but that's what I would like to hear about the discussion about how that affects instruction.
Sure.
More than anything else.
It does matter, and there's a lot of research out there about that. And the other thing that's popped up is, that I was thinking about, is they're now talking about kids coming to school so early. You know, you're seeing that on, too, that they'd be better, they learn more if they start later, not, you know, rather than 8 o'clock. And I've not really done a lot of that. Plus, basically, we're still on this agrarian calendar.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't live in that kind of a society anymore. So, maybe here's your opportunity to make some good changes.
Well, you have to remember the...
I don't know what they would be, but...
Yeah, the one change you can't make is starting before September 1.
September 1, I know. But that could fall on a minute's notice, too, for all we know, you know?
At the meeting we were at today, it didn't sound like that was going away.
And all year-round school, I mean, what happened to that, you know?
Well, Mike Thompson made the comment at our WI meeting on Friday that schools are playing games with it, saying they're going to all-year school just so they can start before September 1, and they're still taking June and July off.
I believe it. But this is, we're still in this old-time agrarian calendar.
Yeah. Well, and the other thing, you know, I talked about in my notes to you is in-service days, of trying to get more in that, trying to get rid of. I philosophically don't think early release days do us a lot of good. A, we do a shortened schedule all day long, so we lose minutes, we lose time, or we don't even go to some classes. Now, we put teachers through two hours of in-service, and we send kids home early to some places, no place, or people have to find childcare. I would rather really look for, if we're going to do an in-service, to do it all day and make it worth our time, and give the students, if nothing else, a three-day break here and there. Don't you be smiling at me, Eli.
Yeah, well, I agree with you. I mean, when we have like half-days, I mean, honestly, a bunch of classes, like, not as much gets done in two half-days if you just had just one day, one full day, rather than just having two half-days. More would get done in that one day. If you give someone a three-day weekend, I feel like that'd be a better way of going about it.
So, those are things, and I don't, Bob, that I can give you any pluses for why you would go later or less days. What I'm saying is that I just want people to be aware of, if they want to go by the standards, that's what it could be. standards, that's what it could be. The other thing is, I would like to see us have a discussion, and going back to your adding minutes, the administration talked about that, well, we could add 10 minutes to the day. At the elementary, that means something. At the middle school, it might mean something, but in block scheduling, 10 minutes is two minutes a period. What's it get you other than you added on some minutes to the end of the day? So it's not a good-for-all-b buildings type thing. Now, I know there are places that do that when they're trying to make up back in the day, because maybe they have too many snow days, but it's not educationally sound at the high school, at least. So think about, shoot me emails, shoot me stuff on this stuff. As I continue to look at it, I will too. The only other one that I put in here is that, you know, we have a, an antiquated deal from old contracts, as you would say, Donna, back in the old days. You know, in our contract, we've got, it says, you have to start at this time and you have to go home at this time. And I don't know if we're not in the day and age where a professional day is a professional day. I mean, I also, you know, I drive by these buildings at night. I don't see a lot of lights on anymore, like you used to in the old days. That's because the computer says I can stay at home and do the work now, and so they are. I know they are. I see what they're doing. They don't have to sit in their classrooms anymore and do their work. So a professional, you know, maybe some common courtesy back and forth. I know why the 7:45 and 3:45 was there. I know because people took advantage of it. I taught with somebody who did for a long time, but I don't know that we're not in a day where we need to treat them like professionals. We ask them to go home, we ask them to make calls, something to think about. So I'm just asking you to think about those things next month. I'd like to get some better ideas. I hope by then that, Joanne, we will have some things on breaks and other things like that, and so that we can discuss it. All right?
The other thing about the length of the day that you were just talking about, the high school now has opportunities that they may not want to be on a traditional day anymore because they're going, you know, you've got your middle college students, you've got your youth option students, so-
Jedi students.
Jedi students, so you may want to change how, the structure of your day.
Right.
I don't know that either, but I know it's happening. And actually, I have a study I can send to you too, where the United States has one of the lowest numbers of days of high school-
In the world.
In the world. I think they're the second lowest.
So, yeah, just, but I just wanted to get that out there before we started getting to, we have to finalize the calendar.
All right. Mr. Permer.
All right, so last Friday, the show choir sang at the tree lighting in Commons Park, and then also National Honor Society made a snowman, you can see on the door over there just to celebrate all winter coming up. And this Thursday is a band and orchestra concert. Next Tuesday is a choir concert, and back to the Wedding Singer, the musical that happened. There were 11 nominations for the Tommy Awards, and we won't know if those nominations are going to actually be selected to win, but I know that Maddie Burgum won the Spirit Award, and so she's going to go sing at the Overture Center this June. Also, as far as music is concerned, the high school hosted the middle school honors choir for sports. Girls' basketball started 2-0, however, they lost last Thursday. Boys' basketball beat Waterloo last Thursday, and over the weekend, wrestling took third at the Cambridge Invite, and seniors are working on senior exhibitions, which are going to be showing the last day before break. So that's all I have.
Pretty good.
He doesn't want to tell you about his senior exhibition, so he'll have to come see it.
Yeah.
What's the date?
He's in it.
Friday?
Yes, I'm in it.
When's the date?
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
19.
19, all day.
Yep.
All right. Policy committee was busy. You see the policies, it's the first run-through, a lot of just updating, updating if there's a word. We updated them, and we'll have a final reading next, next board meeting. So Finance Committee.
Okay.
Dr. Thomas.
I'm going to spend just a few minutes on this because it was really important, what we talked about with that, this consultant from the Moore Company. And I'm hoping that the teachers listen too, because this has a lot of implications for you folks, but we had a presentation by the Moore Company, and he provided, you all have a handout that he provided, and this is a company that would work with us to lead us in a study of our benefit offerings. Now, it could include a lot of different benefits, but it's mostly focused to, toward mainly health insurance. And it also has a piece where people get together, and this would mean that we would probably resurrect our insurance committee. Remember that committee that we have, that there would be a need for this group to meet? And you people know about this group too, because many of you served on it. Now, what's the purpose of working with this company? Kind of what I sifted out from our discussion that evening was, one of the things they talked about was that it would save the district money as well as the staff, and that we would get away from this thing that we do right now, and that is, when we need to save money, what do we do? We just increase the deductibles, and that's our, what means of saving money. But there are a lot of other ways to save money on things like health insurance. So that's one thing that they would lead us in a study of. And we would be moving away from this idea that we do right now, that we're one-size-fits-all. In other words, I'm an older staff member, so I have certain benefit needs, but someone's just new in the field, they have different needs, and they may not be as concerned about deductibles because they don't go to the doctor as much. So they would lead us in this effort too, so that we would get away from this concept of one-size-fits-all. And the other thing it would do is that where there's, in the past, we just expect the district to take care of us. This would involve people more and give them more ownership in their own, and in their own, and their family's healthcare. And in the past, it was kind of like I say, up to the district to take care of us, and there's really no one in our, in a district that's an expert in healthcare. So we were just kind of always kind of working from there. And the other thing is, is what Bob mentioned, that this would bring us, it would give us an opportunity to look at the bigger picture and from a more global perspective at the benefits that we had and some long-term solutions to those things. The other districts right now that are working with this company is Ripon, they've been with them one year, Brown Deer has just about completed a year, and New Berlin has worked with them for over a year. So those are the three districts. The one thing I thought was a little bit fuzzy, but it's, it's kind of talked about in here, is kind of when it's all said and done, what could we expect if we hired these people? Are they going to give us a report? Are we going to have a plan exactly? That wasn't fully clear, and I don't think you knew exactly either, Bob, what it was going to be. And then what's the cost of doing this? Well, they have in this, in the handout that they gave us, they have three different proposals. One is a flat fee that they charge, or we could pay them for performance based on, we set criteria, and if they meet the performance, they could pay X number of dollars, or we currently pay money to an insurance broker, and they feel that they could, that they could possibly help us in that area and take, get their fee instead of paying all the money to, I think it was Houseman Johnson, wasn't it? So, and we have things to do to get ready, like, before we can bring this back to the board in January, which is when it's kind of intended to, to be brought back to the board. The other thing we talked about that I think is important to all of us is this whole idea of updating our 403B plan, because it's kind of restricted right now, and there are some proposed changes being made at it. Like Bob said, we're adding Roth, an opportunity for, we're recommending that there be an IRA Roth opportunity to put in there. One of our 403B providers that we accept, we're taking away, and we're putting in someone that's kind of like a brokerage firm, so that you would, actually, even though it doesn't seem like it, but through this firm, you could have access to a lot more things. We wouldn't necessarily do it. It would go to this firm, who would then parcel out the money. So our teachers would have opportunities to join a lot of other 403B plans. Everything that's in this new change of this proposed plan works in with what you brought up when you talked in the community section about looking at the post-retirement benefits and looking at these 403B plans, these IRA Roths. Everything is kind of, opens it up so that whatever happens and changes in early retirement benefits could, this could fit into it. I don't know exactly how. So that, those are really the two things that really are going to mean a paradigm shift for the way we've been doing business in our benefits, and I think it's going to be for the best, really. It's, it seems to be the wave of the future. Private industry's been doing it for quite some time, and some schools districts are already started into it. So that's kind of the majority of things that happened in the finance committee that night. And Bob talked about the par educator subpay that we talked about and the scholarship, where we're moving into our community foundation. That's it. This really, I really felt good when I left there, that there was a lot of promise. There are other companies that do this too, but this happened to be the one that made the presentation. Then the other thing that went with it was yesterday, I think it was, we got our school news. And Dean, the night you were there for part of the meeting, we talked about this Al Jaeger fellow that had come and talked a lot to CISA. Well, here he is, he has a little, a little article in here that touches upon a lot of the things that we talked about the other night at the finance committee. So I would encourage the teachers too to look in the school news, that there's an article about, is it important for school board members to be educated employee benefit issues? Talks about that. Talks about employee wellness programs and more involvement in their, in ownership for their own healthcare. So if you get a chance, read that article too. You might like that article, Bob, in that magazine that goes with this thing.
Okay, thank you. No correspondence?
There was, but Steve would have it, so.
Okay, action items. Approval of German exchange program.
This is a program that you've had in the past, as you can see in the letter. It's an opportunity for students to go to Germany and an opportunity for them to have students come here, even though we do not have a German club anymore, or German, we don't teach German. Some of them I know that are still very interested in just the country of Germany and being able to, you know, experience the culture, and again, I think it's just another opportunity we can give students for, you know, for more well-rounded education.
Also, can I be sure to point out, we don't teach German in-house, but it's available through our distance learning Jedi program.
All right. Motion, please.
Well, I would move the board to approve the German exchange program for June of 2016. It's understood the board will incur no cost and accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
Moving second and third. One or the other. Any comments? Questions? Roll call, please.
Bob DiPirio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye. F. Passy unanimously. Approval gifts.
We have three this month. One is a gift to the middle school music program from the Cumberland School District. Cumberland is big in that marching, they go to the contest every year at Whitewater. For at least the past three or four years, they stay overnight here, they come in late Friday, compete on Saturday, and drive home. I've known the principal at Cumberland for, won't go back how far I've known him, so they come here, they use our, they stay at the middle school and then go to the competition. So they pay the facility fee, and then they always donate something to our music program. Secondly, is we were given a donation from the Madison Community Foundation for $1,059 to be used by families for items and activities in the wintertime that they can't afford. And lastly, was a gift of $400 from the First Congregational Church, the elementary school white fund to be used, again, to help children that may be in need.
Could I have a motion, please?
Move the board to approve the following gifts. $100 for the middle school band program from the Cumberland School District, gift of $1,059 from the Madison Community Foundation, and a gift of $400 from the First Congregational Church of Lake Mills to the elementary school white fund, and thank them all for their very generous donations.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the gifts. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Bob DiPirio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye. F. Passy unanimously. January board items.
Okay, we have this, I'll invite them, we'll invite the Moore Group to come give a presentation. WASB resolutions would be there. Donna, do you want to put that par subpay on there? Do you want to move it to a board agenda?
I thought we were going to do that on January. Did you think that, Bob? There was one other thing, too.
Scholarships.
Yeah.
Scholarship MOU and the 403B plan changes.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll need-
We'll have all those policies.
We'll need an executive session for the purpose of evaluating-
The superintendent.
Superintendent.
Yeah. Are the adminis, other administrators still in the same timeline?
You know, under the new, the new law and the new program, theirs is not done until the end of the year.
Okay.
So I would have it to you, I mean, we can discuss extension of contracts, but the evaluation itself is not done until the end of the year.
No, but the contracts are still in the statute.
Same thing, yes, we would discuss that.
Anything else?
Mr. Handel.
Thank you. I would have had it, but I think that's it.
Well, you said the resolutions, didn't you?
Yes. And news that we don't get those till after Christmas.
The calendar?
Yes.
General policy approval.
I have those on.
Have those. All right. Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Okay, I'll move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.82 Part 1, Part C, which is considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation to add of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Personnel and exit interview report.
Second.
Second, could we have roll call, please?
Bob DiPirio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye. We are adjourned to executive session.